This time we'll open up the City Council Meeting Committee of the Hole for the April 5, 2022 meeting. The City Council should have the minutes of the Committee of the Hole from our March 15th meeting. Is there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, is there a move to approve?
So moved.
Motion is second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the minutes are carried forth. We have a number of Board and Commission appointments to make tonight, and Mayor Pro Tim Witten is out of town on a business trip, so I'll be handling that. We'll start with the downtown design review. We have one vacancy tonight. The incumbent is Anna Solomon. She has served one full term. She has applied for a second full term. I'll nominate Anna Solomon for a second full term.
Second.
Have a motion in seconds. Any discussion or comments? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries, and we'll confirm that later on in the agenda. Historic Preservation Commission, we have two vacancies tonight. The terms begin April the 21st of 2022, and they will end April 202025. We have one incumbent that is seeking actually a third term. I would like to nominate Maven Beard to serve a third full term on the Historic Preservation Commission.
Second.
All right, have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions? All right, all in favor of nominating, of appointing Maven Beard, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries forth. Thank you. And then Mr. Christian Dag, we appreciate his work with the Historic Preservation Commission. He has decided not to seek a second full term. So at this time, I'd like to nominate Mr. Goram Byrd.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor of Mr. Goram Byrd, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries, and we'll confirm that later on. And we certainly thank Christian for his service. And then finally, Planning Commission, we had six outstanding applicants. We interviewed three of those applicants tonight, and this is to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Mac Lazenby. Certainly, we thank Mr. Lazenby for his service. This term will begin immediately and will end July 31, 2023. I'd like to nominate Dr. Jo Aestrip.
Second.
All right, have a motion in a second for Dr. Aestrip. Are there any other nominations?
Yes, I would like to nominate Dr. Joanne Abrams.
Second.
All right. All right, so there's a motion and a second for Dr. Joanne Abrams. At this time, is there any discussion?
Um, my nomination for Dr. Abrams, all three candidates did an excellent job at the interview and everything. And, you know, it was a hard decision to make, but when I went back and looked at some of the notes and everything, I was really impressed with all of them, all of three of them interviews, but I was really impressed with the fact when we talked about the 10 to 20-year plan, and she was talking about balance. And so that was rather impressive to me, and is one of the reasons why I chose her as a nomination for this position.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Any other comments regarding this? Okay, all right, so we'll begin with Dr. Aestrip. All in favor of Dr. Jo Aestrip, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, well, we'll do that with a hand count if we could, Lindsay. So all in favor of Dr. Aestrip, please raise your hand. That's fine, okay. And so we will confirm Dr. Aestrip later on in the agenda. I will agree with Ms. Taylor, we had three outstanding interviews, and I appreciate everyone seeking this position. Planning is so important to our, our community, and there's so much going on, and you really have to dig in and want to be a part of it, and I think anybody who wants to be a part of our planning commission. All right, any questions on the agenda for the City Manager? Any questions from the dais for the City Manager? Okay. Seeing none, is there any other, any other things from the council?
Yes, sir, Mayor, if I may.
Please.
I have recently been contacted by several citizens complaining about the construction occurring in the city. Their main concern is why the projects are taking so long to complete. The main areas of concern have been Opelika Road, Cox Road widening project, and Cox and Wire turnabout, or roundabout either way. I agree with the citizens that these projects seem to be never-ending. I can certainly understand why everyone is frustrated, and frankly, have felt them, have felt frustrated as well. I have a couple of questions for the City Manager.
Yes, sir.
When, when did the Cox Road widening project start construction?
I'll have our city engineer, Allison Fraser, speak to that.
The Cox Road widening project started in June of 2020.
And we're not completely through yet, are we?
The project is substantially complete. The only item that remains that we are aware of is the permanent striping and markings. There is one contractor in the whole state of Alabama that does permanent stripings and markings, so we're at their mercy, not only for this project, but for several other projects.
Is it normal to take two years to do something like that?
It, it can, is it normal? It depends on the scope of the project. Projects can be extended because of weather delays. We can extend the scope of work, and sometimes it's contractor efforts or lack thereof which extend projects.
When, when do you expect it to actually be completed with the reflectors and striping and all that?
We are waiting on the striping contractor. They actually have our city restriping project, and they tell us, we check on them every, every few months, and they say in a few weeks, we expect them to be here this month. And hopefully, when they come into our city project, they will also button up some of the other projects that we are not directly managing like Cox Road.
Thank you. Do we take any type of recourse against the contractor for taking so long on these projects? Do you have a mechanism for making sure or rewarding if he finishes early or something like that?
So one of the things we've, we've looked at recently is adding incentives and disincentives to our project. So in the case of the roundabout, it includes an incentive, however the contractor did not meet the deadline to get that. But our contracts do include liquidated damages for damages that we incur beyond the contract time.
I would say to the entire council, while contractually, we're a little careful about the things that we say, we're well aware of what's in the contracts, and we will, we will handle accordingly anything that we are able to handle based on certain circumstances. And that goes for any contract the city has, not just the ones mentioned tonight. We take them very seriously. Also, one of our challenges with these, we've had a few folks, and we'll get to some other projects in a minute, have some concern, why don't you just change contractors in the middle of a project and get a different one? In this day and age, it's very hard to find any road building contractors, and once one gets started, nobody's going to come in and, and follow up their work and guarantee it. So anything that we're doing with any project, even if it's taking too long, we'll let that project finish. We'll evaluate. Our engineers keep very detailed notes. We'll evaluate, and contractually, if there's things that need to be dealt with, they'll be dealt with through the city attorney's office.
Yeah, I was just curious if there was actually a mechanism for making that happen. You know, I believe rewarding to finish early, but if they finish late, I think something will be done.
Absolutely. This council's been very interested in that before, asking us, could we get things moving sooner? And we have made attempts, if there are contracts that do not involve the Alabama Department of Transportation, and what I mean is sometimes we get some funding or it involves their right-of-way, those are different as to whether or not they can have it. If it's a city-controlled project, we are building in standard, I believe in that, as City Manager. When it comes to road projects, the public wants them done as quickly as possible. I also think the public's a little frustrated that we just don't have contractors work in the middle of the night only. I wish it was that simple to convince a contractor to do all of their work overnight. When our water resource management team fixes water or sewer lines or replaces them, often they do the work at night because that's our own city employees, and we're very grateful of the sacrifices they make. With our contractors, it's a little tougher right now, but it's always on the table for us to look at.
Yeah, I agree with you about people get anxious, but, you know, two years on one road is, I just, I don't understand it. Where are we at on the roundabout? Is it complete now, or?
The roundabout is substantially complete as well. They placed the ring surface last week, I think it was, but we're also at the mercy of the striping contractor. We also need to do a final punch list walkthrough to develop a list of things that the contractor needs to do as part of completing the project.
Allison, can you explain what substantially complete is just to the council so they understand? That's a contractual term we use.
Thank you, yes. Substantially complete for us is when they've completed all of the major items of work. We used to include striping on that, but once we got down to one striping contractor in the state, substantially complete means they've completed essentially everything up to that point. They may have some minor grading to do, some grassing, just minor things to, to finish it, but we hold money and retainage until the project is complete, complete.
Also, could you give us an update on Opelika Road project, when it was started and when it's due to be completed?
The Opelika Road project started in 2019? No, 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 no.
No, yeah.
21, I'm sorry.
No, it was originally, it was COVID delayed. We were, we were in the middle of bidding it, and COVID happened, and we.
20, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we stopped, and in 20, we picked it up later in 20.
Thank you, in 20. We've had some design issues on Opelika Road, conflicts with utilities that were not located during design. We've had to redesign a good bit of the storm sewer system. Some of the lighting has been impacted by fiber optic lines, and, but the contractor is anticipating being complete with the north side of the road, which is the side Niffers is on within the next couple of weeks, and then will shift traffic because we still have to construct the medians on the interior lane. So it is not complete yet, obviously, it's not complete.
So when, I may have missed it, but when are you looking for, what's your best guess? When it be completed?
Councilman Dawson, I would say my best guess, educated guess based on what's left to do, it would be early summer before they finish, and that's pending any, any significant weather issues that might come between now and then.
Yeah, because you got some businesses out there that are hurting, I feel like, because of this and there. I can understand their, their pain, and frankly, I tend to agree with them.
Yeah, and I'd also like to point out, this is a former right-of-way owned by the Alabama Department of Transportation that was given to the city, and one of the reasons we didn't have all the data on it, we didn't realize, there's a, there's a weird thing sitting in front of Niffers, like a gigantic hole with a concrete barrier, and a lot of people have asked what that is. The city engineer explained, but I'll explain in City Manager terms. We also learned there's concrete underneath and in the middle of this road, and when they got to digging to do water lines and other things, they found what, Allison?
Concrete.
Yeah.
That's Megan's there, yeah.
And it's not been easy to repair now. It's not, certainly not an excuse, we acknowledge that, but short of jackhammering down in the middle of Opelika Road, it's not a road that we previously maintained, and so this project hasn't gone as we wish. The midtown development was the reason that we pulled the trigger on this phase out of order versus other phases of Opelika Road, and I wish that it had gone better, but there's been a number of things that have happened, some within our control and some beyond our control. And so we know the traveling public has much to say about it on social media, and we clearly understand that, but I would also appreciate if you have specific questions, please call the city, please email, please put it in on FixIt. We'll be happy to address your concerns directly. The speculation on social media is challenging because everybody is, is gleaning information from citizen to citizen, and the city would love the opportunity to talk to citizens directly to have questions.
I just want to say, I understand the citizens' concerns, and I appreciate it, and I believe the city's working hard, from listening tonight to Ms. Fraser talk, working hard to get this completed. I understand sometimes things are going to happen where you can't, it's going to run you, make you run late, but I'd like to ask you, Megan, and I'm not asking because I really don't know, are we communicating enough ourselves through social media and other ways to let people know what's going on, or give updates on it weekly, or?
We are not, for Opelika Road, giving weekly updates. We tend with a road project to give updates on social media about closures or shifts in traffic or new traffic signals going to flash. We had, we got heavily criticized on social media about a signal going to flash on Glen Avenue and that it was dangerous. We're required by law to have the signal flash for X amount of days before we can put it into operation, so it's not a choice, it's not the city being bureaucratic, it is a law we have to follow. In general, we will be launching shortly a new capital improvement program, which is all of our capital projects portion on our website, that will have more timely updates on it, and we'll be pushing out on social media more information to direct citizens to that area that gives more, more updates than, than say quarterly. They'll be at a minimum monthly updates. And then there's some projects like Sanford and College and Sanford and Gay Street that we're about to tear up that will, they'll, they'll have a, a little more active participation because there's going to be so many lane shifts, closures at certain times, not football, that we'll, we need to notify everybody, and we need to push that out, so we'll be doing that. And you'll see the same on Opelika Road.
I think if we could get more information out there, I think it would help our citizens a lot.
Absolutely.
At least they'll know, hey, Cox Road's going to be blocked today, or Opelika Road's going to be doing this.
Yeah, and we do that frequently. If there's any lane closures, it's out there. We've been pushing it out for a long period of time, so we, we very much encourage people to subscribe to e-notifier. They can choose what they want because it'll push emails or text messages, but they can also subscribe to our social media channels, and we're happy to assist with that if somebody's unsure.
Thank you, thank you for everybody's hard work.
Well, and to follow up on that, if I may, you know, and not to, not to heap on, but the, the, the general update, you know, on, on Opelika Road in particular, we've mentioned the hole in front of, in front of Niffers, and perhaps that's a median issue, you know, that we, we have to, to deal with after the fact, but that is something that seems to have been a, you know, an ongoing obvious issue that perhaps we could educate people on, like, look, you know, this is, this is an issue, this is something that's going to be on the tail end of the project, that, you know, we didn't just pack up and leave in the middle of the night, leave this hole in the middle of the street for months. And so, you know, I will support Councilman Dawson in that. I think it's, we've all heard, you know, why in the world would, we could repave Opelika Road in the time that, that we've been working on it, and I understand all the, the issues, but communication would be key there. My second issue, while I've got the microphone, you know, we've mentioned one paving, excuse me, one striping contractor in the state, do we require certain certifications for striping contractors?
So you'll see temporary striping, you see that in a lot of places now, that the best way to know if it's permanent, it's called thermoplast, and it's sparkly. It has the reflection, it's reflective, and so permanent striping makes it in, especially inclement weather and other things, much easier to see. So if it looks dull or seems to be washing away, a lot of that is, is temporary striping. Thermoplast has a longer life on it. There are different grades of thermoplast, all the wonderful things you learn as City Manager, but we, we use a higher grade of thermoplast, it'll last longer and it is safer. But yeah, there is one contractor. We have looked and are continuing to look at a small thermoplast machine that could do some crosswalks, limited striping, but not something like East University Drive, and we're still evaluating that, and we'll be talking about it during the budget whether we're going to go there or not.
Chief, I appreciate you bringing this up. I just want to say to our community that we know that this is frustrating, and certainly to the businesses, particularly those in Opelika Road, I feel for you. I was at one of those businesses last week with all my family, enjoying dinner, and it was complicated to get in and out of there. I want the community to know that the city staff is doing all that they can to get these projects moved forward, and obviously, you know, tonight, we talked about more aggressive ways that we can communicate what's going on with all these projects with our community, and I would hope that we will move forward and do that, and be as intentional and as aggressive as we can telling our citizens what's going on, but I know you're frustrated, and I appreciate your patience, and, you know, it's our desire to get these finished as fast as possible. It's been a long time, and we know that. Okay.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
I would like to say something also. And I can understand the frustration of the community and everything about the roundabouts and the construction going on. Fortunately, I do work with contracts every day. That's, that's my job at Tuskegee. So I work with those, and when it come down to actually, and I, and I sort of kind of want to defend the contractors a little bit, what I'm saying is, is because even when you, and I'm not out in the field, but I work in the office part of it, so I, I understand what be going on with a lot of this construction and stuff. When you got contractors in there, and, and they, even they just sign the contract for a starting time and a finish time, the, the main factor a lot of time is the weather. And I know, I, I can't remember if it's 2019 or 2020, but we had a lot of rain one of those years, a lot of rain. So that, that prolongs, you know, the construction, that prolongs the time. Sometimes you have to stretch it out, stretch your time out. The community does not know that, which is a good point that you made about, you know, putting it out there, and they don't understand that sometimes the project is not going to go as, as it's supposed to go. And so when, when, when things like that happen, mainly, the main things that really happen is either it's going to be weather or some type of unforeseen item or, or project that not happen on the ground or whatever, and so then you got to stretch out the contract, and you got to do change orders, and you got to do all this different kind of stuff. But, but, and, and that just, just to say, that part of it as far as the construction and the contractors go. But now, speaking of Cox Road, and I travel there every morning going to work, the only problem I have in that intersection, in that roundabout, is I don't really think people understand how you're supposed to yield in those things, and I've, and I've seen several accidents, including myself, that, well, this person thinking they're supposed to go in, this person thinking, and everybody going at the same time. So I don't know, and, and I haven't paid attention, Megan, whether there's enough yield signs out there or how it's supposed to go, but I know it can be confusing some mornings, and, and I've like they got hit, or I've like they hit somebody because I think, I'm thinking that I'm supposed to go before them, and they thinking they're supposed to go before me, and that's the problem I done had on Cox Road. And I go every morning, that's where I travel, going to Tuskegee every morning, and I, and I'm thankful for it. The cones, all those cones and stuff, that's confusing. You get up on, on those things, and they confusing. On Opelika Road, it's almost like, and I travel that road a lot, too, it's like, just before you get, if you're coming out of Opelika, and you meet them too, and the track, and that little arrow that telling you to go, stay over in this lane, it, it look like those cones need to be pushed up a little bit because you got a cone in the side of you, then you riding this side, and you don't know whether to get over, they don't know whether to go your way, and so, so it's sort of confusing right there, and those are the issues I got with it. It's not so much the time it's taken for the construction. Opelika Road, yeah, but not Cox Road, because we had a lot of rain one year. And, but it is, it's sort of confusing with that roundabout.
Well, I appreciate your observation, but I don't think it takes two years to go a mile paving and clearing the side of road. Two years is a little bit long, kind of, for anybody.
Well, I'm, yeah, well, I know, you know, that's standing on the outside looking in, so it, it may appear that way, but hey, that, that's me. That's my opinion, I like that's your opinion.
Yes, Kelly.
Yeah, this is related to what Chief Dawson has mentioned there, and I, he and I were talking about, I guess, partial, part of this is because we only get one bidder on some of these big projects like this, and that may be an action that the City Council can take note of. Maybe we ought to ask more questions and not allow a contract to be awarded if there's only one bidder. You know, maybe we ought to take in past performance as a criteria before we authorize the City Manager to go and execute these contracts. So, I mean, there's some things like the pool chemicals, which we'll see tonight, which is, we got to have those before summer, that's fine. Only one bidder on that, as we'll see later on tonight. But huge projects like this, when you have a single contractor, you've got us over the barrel, you know? Maybe we don't want to let that contract at that particular time. That's something that we as a council should take into consideration.
I just always thought this state required three bids.
No, we're required to bid it, and if we don't get bids, or we only get one bidder, sometimes there's some negotiation, but there are only specific reasons why. We either have to accept a bid if we want to move forward with the project, or reject it for specific reasons, but we can't, we will have to talk to the council another time about all the ins and outs of contracts, because there are very specific things we have to follow with Public Works bid law that are not, of course, like everything, very complicated. So we're happy to go over that with you if you want to learn more about it.
Does, does the City of Auburn follow the ALDOT guidelines? Are we pretty much in line with what they do, or are we different from them?
Kind of depends on what you're referring to. On, on Public Works bid law, we have bidding a road project that's just the City of Auburn that doesn't involve any state funding, what have you. We're following state law in terms of our bidding requirements, but there are projects where ALDOT is involved due to funding, or it involves their right-of-way, where we also have to follow their standard specifications and details. Then there's also some other things, we'll talk about ALDOT standards that are just in our construction manuals because that's normal, so it's, it's, it's a very complicated process, but we do bid, they call it letting projects, which is awarding bids, and they do some things slightly different than we do.
Thank you. Anything else from the council? Now, is there a move to adjourn?
移到
All right, we are adjourned the Committee of the Hole, and it is 7:20, so we'll go right into our City Council meeting. I'll call it a order tonight's Auburn City Council meeting for April the 5th, 2022. And Lindsay, with the roll call.
Dawson.
Here.
Dixon.
Here.
Rickwell.
Here.
Cody.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Smith.
Present.
Taylor.
Here.
Witten.
Here.
Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Since it is the first meeting of the month, we'll recognize our outstanding employees with our Employee of the Month and Service Awards, and there'll be a, a couple of other videos recognizing some outstanding young people at Auburn High School.
I'm Mayor Ryan Anders, and we're proud to introduce you to our April 2022 Employee of the Month, as well as a number of other city employees and special, and their special Today, we're proud to introduce you to the City of Auburn April 2022 Employee of the Month, and I have a memorandum here from Dan Ballard, the interim director of Public Works, written to Megan McGowan Crouch, the Auburn City Manager. The purpose of this memorandum is to nominate Mark Dumas as the City of Auburn's April 2022 Employee of the Month. Mark accepted his current position as a right-of-way maintenance worker within the Public Works Department in June of 2020, after faithfully serving more than 24 years as the collection system maintenance worker within the Water Resource Management Department. Mark immediately familiarized himself with the various duties and tasks of the right-of-way Maintenance Division, and has since distinguished himself by exhibiting a strong work ethic, care of, and support for his fellow crew members, and an eagerness to learn and grow within his new position. Over the course of the last two years, Mark has demonstrated a strong affinity for taking on tough assignments, and a high capacity for learning new skills and operating the various equipment required to maintain the city's rights away in a safe and attractive condition. Mark has taken the initiative to become a highly scaled operator of the tractor-powered boom mower. This has vastly expanded the right-of-way division's capacity to perform necessary cutbacks of vegetation to maintain city standards associated with minimum site distances and clearances along our hundreds of miles of roadway. Overall, Mark leads by example in his service to Auburn and represents the city's core values through his words and his actions on a daily basis. His contributions to the Public Works Department and to the City of Auburn are commendable and deserving of praise and recognition. For these reasons, I, Dan Ballard, the interim director of Public Works, nominate Mark Dumas for the city's Employee of the Month for April 2022. We have a special recognition for a number of our employees here at the City of Auburn. They'll be recognized for the State Excellence in GIS Award for Auburn's Street Tree Explorer. I have a memorandum here. I have a memorandum here from Greg Nelson, our chief information officer, written to Megan McGowan Crouch, the city manager. In late November, local, state and federal and private GIS practitioners gathered in Gulf Shores, Alabama for the twenty twenty-one GIS of Alabama conference hosted by the state of Alabama Geographic Information Office. A surprise in this year's conference was a special recognition of the city of Auburn in the new excellence in GIS award. Secretary Hal Taylor and Chief Geographic Officer Philip Henderson presented the award to the city with special recognition of our Street Tree Explorer mapping application. The Street Tree Explorer educates citizens on the value of urban and right-of-way trees. A team from Public Works and Information Technology collaborated on this uniquely Auburn presentation on the value of trees. The online map, which you can find at auburnalabama.org/streettreexplorer, teaches citizens both the economic and ecological value of trees based on where trees are located, the kind and health of each tree, and the cares, and the care staff provides. Credit to Ann Randall, Public Works Urban Forestry Specialist, Will Kimry, IT GIS Developer, Laura Arroy, former IT GIS Analyst, Britt Johnson, IT GIS Business Analyst, and Christopher Graff, Deputy Chief Information Officer, for creating this powerful education tool for our citizens and for demonstrating the greater potential that comes from working together to achieve a common goal. Thank all of y'all for your hard work, we appreciate it. Today, we have a special recognition for Ms. Michelle Wall. I have a memorandum here from Kristen Reader, our Human Resources Director, written to Megan McGowan Crouch, the city manager. Upon being promoted to the HR Business Partner Manager role, Michelle set her sights on earning the Senior Certified Professional Designation through the International Public Management Association for Human Resources. This designation requires a, requires passing a rigorous test and is a demonstration of Michelle's mastery of the knowledge of the human resources field. Her leadership and guidance are critical to the success of our department. I am pleased to nominate Michelle for an achievement award, recognizing this accomplishment in her, her career with the city of Auburn. Thank you, Michelle. We're proud today to be at Auburn High School, recognizing our recent state champions, and I have a resolution here from the city council, and I'd like to read that. Whereas the city council is pleased to honor Auburn City Schools, its faculty, staff and students for their excellent achievements and contributions both inside and outside the classroom. Whereas Auburn High School's Charlie Sexton recently won the twenty twenty-two Alabama High School Athletic Association's seven A individual track state championship in the indoor sixty-meter dash. And whereas Charlie, a member of Auburn High School's class of twenty twenty-two, finished with a time of six point eight four seconds and is now the Auburn High School record holder in the indoor sixty-meter dash. And whereas during the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one season, Charlie ranked tenth in the hundred meters, sixth in the four hundred meter, and ended the season with a second-place finish in the two hundred meter at the state outdoor meet. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Auburn, Alabama, that the council hereby recognizes and formally congratulates Charlie Sexton for his outstanding achievements and his exemplary efforts in representing Auburn City Schools and the city of Auburn. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and presented to head coach, Medetric Oliver, and Charlie Sexton, adopted and approved by the city council, by the city of Auburn, Alabama, this fifth day of April twenty twenty-two. Congratulations, Charlie, we're very proud of you. Whereas the city council is pleased to honor Auburn City Schools, its faculty, staff and students for their excellent achievements and contributions both inside and outside of the classroom. And whereas Erin Clarkson, a tenth grader at Auburn High School, earned an individual state championship in the one hundred and two pound division of wrestling. And whereas Erin competed against a wrestler from Daphne High School at Thompson High School in Alabaster, Alabama, ultimately took her opponent down and won by way of a pin. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Auburn, Alabama, that the council hereby recognizes and formally congratulates Erin, head varsity coach Joe Eckhart, assistant coaches Cory Cotter and Nathan Baker for their outstanding achievements and their exemplary efforts in representing Auburn City Schools and the city of Auburn. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and presented to head coach Joe Eckhart, adopted and approved by the city of Auburn, Alabama, this fifth day of April twenty twenty-two. Congratulations, we're very proud of you. Coach, congratulations.
Okay, thank you for that video, Greg, and thank you for our public affairs staff for putting that together. Certainly, we're so proud of Mark Dumas and our other employees. We appreciate our, our employees being recognized down at the beach with that GIS, uh, recognition for Street Tree, which I had a hard time pronouncing that day, but, uh, um, very unique and very Auburn-like for us to do something special and be the first ones in the state of Alabama. Uh, and certainly, we're proud of our students and our athletes over at Auburn High School. Chief, I don't think you ever ran a six-eight sixty meters, did you?
Uh, six-nine, I think.
Okay, it was close, I thought you were close. Well, very proud of Charlie, and he's having a great outdoor season, uh, so far as well, but we're very proud of all of them. Uh, during the committee of the whole tonight, we had a number of, uh, board and commission appointments. We, city council reappointed Ms. Anna Solomon to the downtown design review committee. Uh, the city council reappointed Maven Beard to serve on the Historic Preservation Commission and appointed Goran Bird to serve on the Historic Preservation Commission, and then the city council appointed Dr. Joseph A. Strup to serve on the planning commission. Some announcements I have tonight, um, the Tiger Trail of Auburn has been on hiatus for a couple of years during, du- due to COVID, and we'll have, we'll be having our first ceremony in three years, this Friday night at the arena. I think Ms. Hovey is here. Ms. Hovey, if you are here, do we have any more tickets available for the public? Okay, good, Ms. Hovey would love to accommodate you. We'll be, uh, installing eight members, eight former athletes from Auburn University that all have very unique and special stories. Uh, if you love Auburn and want to hear, uh, some great experiences, uh, from former athletes, uh, we encourage you to come spend a couple hours with us Friday afternoon, uh, at the Auburn Arena. Uh, last, uh, Friday, I, uh, was, uh, proud to go over to Opelika and be a part of the Going Blues, our autism recognition, uh, event they had at the courthouse, and I appreciate all the efforts, uh, to support those families who have, uh, members of their family with autism. Tomorrow, myself and Mayor Fuller will be joining Ms. Laura Cooper at the Lee County Youth Development to sign a proclamation. Uh, this is child, uh, child abuse prevention month, and, uh, certainly, I'm proud to be a part of that recognition. The kind people over at Auburn United Methodist Church had me over last week to speak to the Reach Ministry. Uh, this is a ministry that is in support of families who are, uh, have members of their family that are suffering with Alzheimer's and dementia. Uh, what a great, great, um, group of people they were, and I, I was proud to be a part of that. Many of you probably saw in the media that we had a new business open in Auburn, uh, a week ago yesterday, and that's Obix. Uh, the governor was in town, as well as, uh, our United States Representative, Mike Rogers, uh, a very proud moment for our city. Uh, I want to thank our, uh, economic, uh, development team, our industrial development board for all of their hard work, working with these entrepreneurs to put this data center, uh, together. We certainly are proud of our partnership with Auburn University in that, and we look forward to the success of Obix, uh, as it grows into the future. We've had another SGA breakfast since the last time we met and enjoyed some time with some of their new officers and look forward to some time here in the future, and I know they're here tonight. Couple of Saturdays ago, I also was on campus for the big event. Um, very excited to see, uh, almost eight hundred students and, uh, administrators and faculty, and they were signed up to, uh, to participate in almost a hundred and fifty projects around our city, around the area on that Saturday morning. I'm just very thankful and encouraged that our young people that are here with us, uh, thank enough of us that, uh, they gave up their Saturday morning to go and, and make our town and make our community and make somebody's life a little bit easier. So thank all of them for doing that. Couple of weeks ago also, a couple of members of our community were inducted into the Alabama High School, uh, Athletic Hall of Fame. Uh, former Auburn City School Athletic Director Wayne Murphy, who passed away about ten years ago, was inducted in the, uh, the old timers category, and Coach Larry DeShara, who was a basketball coach at Low Chippewa High School, he was also a school superintendent in a number of places and now works actually for one of our industries here, uh, was, uh, inducted as well, and we're certainly proud of both of them. I know coming up soon is a lot of Easter activities. I encourage you to go to our Parks and Rec site, uh, to see what is going on regarding Easter. Uh, and I want to thank all the people who were involved in the car show last weekend, all the reports I got is it was successful and things went off very well, and I appreciate, uh, everybody's hard work on that. All right, those are all my announcements, I appreciate you enduring that. Anybody else on the council have an announcement tonight?
Yeah, Mayor, uh, just spoke on the car show, and I, I got to attend that, and it was a, it was a great event, it was downtown cruise-in car show. Uh, there were about fifty cars that were, uh, I guess allowed to be a part of the show. My car, uh, actually made it in as well and, uh, got to see lots of, lots of unique vehicles that you normally wouldn't get to see, and I think, uh, everyone that was involved just did a wonderful job, uh, getting that together and look forward to a lot more in the future.
Good, thank you, Mr. Dixon. Anyone else have an announcement? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Taylor?
Okay, uh, since we last met, uh, I, I, I want to just thank Al Davis and his staff again for allowing me to host, uh, at the Borkin Community Center, the mother-son, the com- combined mother-son daughter daddy dance. It was a success, and I just want to thank you for opening the doors and allowing our community to be able to have different events at the Borkin Center, and I thank everybody, you know, appreciate that. Mr. Davis, you and your staff, y'all are always there and, um, open the doors for us. Uh, and also, I want to also say that yesterday, I was able to attend a seminar at the Jewel Collins, uh, Smith Museum, uh, sponsored by Doc, uh, Dr. Joanne Harold, Joan Harold, and it was called the Becoming the Beloved Community. And it was an awesome seminar, there was different people, different speakers, panelists of people, and, uh, they had a lot of different issue, uh, um, things that they talked about to make this a more beloved community between Auburn University and Auburn. And they, they had a great panel of, of minorities, different minority groups talking and, and, um, students and professors from different places in this world, and I got a chance to actually talk to, um, the, um, students and professors on the break about my experience as being the only minority on the council. And, um, so that was an experience and some of them wasn't, you know, they, they was excited about it, and it also encouraged, uh, a lot of them to want to run for a political position. So, and, um, but, uh, I really enjoyed it, and it was a great event.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Taylor. Anyone else have an announcement?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, the ongoing conversation with the mural committee, uh, we met again, um, last Monday, and, um, staff, staff had prepared for us a, uh, a document that showed other communities' approaches to, uh, mural policy. Um, we are continuing our conversation and we expect to bring that conversation to the committee of the whole, maybe, uh, this next, the following council meeting.
On April nineteenth?
Yes.
Okay.
Also, I wanted to, uh, share with the, uh, and publicly thank, uh, the Director of Public Safety, Paul Register. Today, I was with a group of visitors here at the municipal building, uh, at the time of the tornado warnings, and, um, we, we got a special tour of the communications center of this building. Uh, very impromptu, uh, Paul, you handled yourself so, so professionally, given the, the amount of radio traffic and phone calls and so on, uh, in front of you in the moment, but I think the group that I was with were, will go home with, uh, a number of good stories to share. And, and since we're in the communications, uh, center, um, next week is, uh, the telecommunication, telecommunications week, uh, where, where public dispatchers are, are recognized for the work that they do. We won't be meeting next week, so I'll take this opportunity to, uh, thank the dispatching community in here at Opelika and the county. It's a tough job, I spent eight years doing it myself, and, um, it's, it's a job that's not for the faint of heart, and we really do appreciate that level of professionalism that they, uh, perform every single day. So shout out to those guys, thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Okay, everybody good?
Um.
Yes, ma'am.
I got one other announcement that I, that I wanted to make. Um, actually, last year, uh, Auburn was, um, declared at a proclamation for June tenth. So this year, we will be celebrating June tenth, uh, on June eighteenth at the Martin Luther King Park, and it's gonna be an all-day event. But that, that event will also be combined with the Unstong Hero, uh, the legacy continues. So, uh, everyone, the public and everyone is invited to come out and enjoy June tenth on June eighteenth, and just in case it rain this year, rain last year, we do have a rain, uh, venue, and we'll announce that la- later, cause we gonna, uh, do a rain dance and hope it don't, we doing a rain dance for not to be in the rain that year. And we expect to, to have a, a nice, um, event this year, it was nice last year, and, uh, I'm inviting the council or anyone else that would like to come out and enjoy June tenth at Martin Luther King Park.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Okay, we'll move ahead with Auburn University Communications.
Hi, everyone, hope y'all doing well and stayed out of the weather today. Um, we just finished up a long week of interviewing students for director positions and SGA cabinet, so we're excited to have a full cabinet now. We have our new Director of City Relations, Olivia Sutherland, and Assistant Director Judson Lizenvie, they're back there, and so they are excited to report to y'all the next year. Um, maybe they'll let me fill in, I'm gonna miss this podium and my Tuesday nights, so, um, they're excited for that. SGA is also partnering with the Provost Office and Regions Bank to, um, start this new thing called Igrad. It's gonna be a financial, um, education program for students, so they can learn how to do important things like loans, manage debit, credit, things like that, things we really need to know, things I'll be attending, my parents will be glad about that. Um, and then this month, Auburn is recognizing Sexual Assault Awareness Month by educating students through social media and doing lots of social media pushes, um, to provide educational resources and also honor the survivors of sexual assault. As for student life, students are getting through the last few months, our last month of school. Um, interior design students were able to go to Hawaii recently to work on their senior capstone projects. This was a first for the program and something that they want to continue to do. And then upcoming, members of the Auburn Rocketry Association, it's the aerospace engineering, um, like student council, they are going to Kansas soon to work on some prestigious launch and flight events, something I would never understand, but proud of them for doing that. Um, and yeah, that's about it, we're excited to continue, um, SGA, I'm staying in SGA as external affairs, so, um, I'll still be at city breakfast, I'm excited, but thank you.
Thank you, thank you for all your good work. Okay, this time, as citizens, uh, communications on items on the agenda, this was only items on tonight's agenda. We do have one item at the end, a resolution that has a public hearing attached. If you would like to speak to the council about this item, please wait until the public hearing is open. Is anyone that'd like to come forward and speak to the council on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move ahead with city managers' communications.
Hi, Mayor, under city managers' communications this evening, I have the announcement of the following vacancy, uh, one vacancy on the Green Space Advisory Board. The unexpired term begins immediately and ends August seventh, twenty twenty-three. The appointment will be made at the May third meeting. Also, in terms of the May third meeting, I'd also like to remind everyone, that will be the first city council meeting that officially starts at six P M. We'll be pushing that out on social, social, social media, but I wanted to make sure I start reminding everyone that we're aligning for, uh, the resolution or that you passed recently, um, changing the, the meeting start time from seven to six P M., which means committee of the whole will be, um, some, somewhere between five thirty and six on average. So just always gonna remind you of that early and often to make sure that we get that out, um, and to our earlier point, we'll talk about it a good bit on social media. And if you're ready to roll into the consent agenda?
Please.
Uh, does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Yes, sir, Ms. Bierzow.
Uh, I'd like to remove item eight E, eight echo.
Eight E?
I'd like to remove item eight F, as in foxtrot five.
And I would like to remove item 8F, as in Foxtrot.
Say that again, Connie.
Four?
Four?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, let's take those in order then, Ms. City Manager.
Item 8E adopts a community development block grant 2022 Annual Action Plan. The CDBG 2022 fiscal year begins June 1, 2022, and anticipated federal funding is $686,092.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
All right, have a motion and a second. Kelly, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was asked today by a citizen if the CBDG program basically only benefited administration and Ward 1 residents. And my answer to that was, was no, absolutely not. It's a citywide program, and so when this is discussed in detail, I would appreciate it if you would emphasize that point so that folks know this program, these programs are available to all of our citizens across the whole city.
I'll have Mr. Davis speak to that real quick, because I think it's important the council understand, but generally speaking, this is federal dollars that, that come to the city to benefit low and moderate income people in our community, period. No preferences given to neighborhood in terms of, of beneficiaries. It has to do with income levels as set by the federal government, and I'll have Mr. Davis expand further.
That is absolutely correct. Our programs benefit Auburn citizens all over Auburn. We have individuals that benefit from everything, from our, our sports vouchers to utility, rental assistance, even the funds that we help support our daycare centers. We have individuals that come from all over the city. So all of the projects, whether it's the funding for the food bank, we just an array of things that we fund through our CBDG program, benefit the entire city. Thank you.
Any comments or questions from the council?
Okay, I also had a question. It says the community block grant Annual Action Plan, 2022 Action Plan. Is that the new monies we're getting, that's coming in on this CDBG?
Yes, yes, ma'am. This is for our, this, this coming year. It starts June 1st. It runs from June 1st through May 3rd of every year, so that's how cycle runs.
Okay. Okay, so, and that, that's when the community come in and you talk to them about how the money is going to be spent?
We've, we've gone through that process, where we were able to, in February, allow organizations that were interested in being funded this cycle to come in and be briefed on the process, which we did do. Now, once we got those applications back, we reviewed the applications, ranked them and, and those applications, and then, and our proposal tonight is recommending how those dollars should be allocated.
Oh, okay. I do think it's important to note that we do a multi-year, what we call Citizen Participation Plan, that turns into a multi-year consolidated plan. We have to do all of these plans, different public meetings and different public hearings, and then the action plan is, is a, is a one-year plan inside of the consolidated plan. You know, we like to talk to, federal government can complicate things every now and again. But what I think is really important is there's a Citizen Participation Plan that's involved in this. There's public hearings along the way, people can write, call, email, come, and we, we use that data that gathered and information gathered to formulate our overall plan, and then this is the one-year implementation, year by year as we get funding. Now, Mr. Davis guesstimated, as we say, based on the funding we received last year, it often depends on what Congress decides they are, aren't going to do, so it could be adjusted up or down depending on the funds we ultimately receive.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else in the council? All right, we have a motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Item 8F4 authorizes a professional services agreement with HHB Engineers PC for mechanical engineering design services for the bidding and installation of air conditioning systems for the Boikin Community Center and Frank Brown Recreation Center gymnasiums in the amount of $55,345.
Move for approval. Second.
All right, have a motion and a second. Ms. Taylor, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, I just wanted, I just wanted the public to hear that Frank Brown and Boikin Community Center Gym is about to get some air conditioning. Especially the people who, who work out over there. So it, it, it just, just something that, you know, I just need everybody to hear.
So, would like to, to speak to that, just to give you a little further idea, we estimate it's going to be about $250,000 to air condition Boikin and about $350,000 to air condition Frank Brown. While everyone is very excited about this, long lead times and production delays could cause this to, to get into the fall before we, we see robust activity. We would love nothing more than to get these installed sooner rather than later. We do have to design them and then go out to bid with them, but the lead time was 18 weeks, I think, the last time, last time we talked about it. So we'll keep you apprised, but for election season, where we use these as polling locations, we do rent air conditioning. We're not trying to cook everyone in there, but this is a much-needed, staff's happy to bring this forward, and it's a much-needed project.
I agree with Ms. Taylor, very exciting. Very excited. It's been a long, a lot of hours in those very hot gymnasiums in the summertime. Very excited. All right, any other comments or questions from the council? Okay, we have a motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries.
Item 8F5 authorizes a professional services agreement with Hydro Engineering Solutions for the Gay Street and Marion Circle Drainage Study in the amount of $30,000.
Move for approval. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Mr. Parsons?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to pull it off the agenda so that this, this project is happening in Ward 6. There is a number of concerned residents who, whose yards occasionally overflow with some of this runoff water, and if, if it's possible, could I get a little brief description of what, what is, what this project is entailing?
City Engineer Frager.
Yes, the contract will be with Hydro Engineering Solutions. Mr. John Curry is one of the top hydrologists in the country, but it's going to be an analysis of the drainage basin. It extends up to Auburn Junior High, well, the Old Junior High.
East Sanford School.
East Sanford School, and down to Marion Circle and to Gay Street, and he's going to analyze existing drainage structures, the existing ditch, to determine if we have an issue or if there's mitigation that's needed in that basin.
Okay, thanks, and I'd just like, on behalf of the residents, I'd like to thank you for being responsive to, to the way that they've reached out to us, and thanks, thanks, I appreciate it.
Okay, anybody else on the council have a question or comment? Okay, we have a motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the consent agenda carries forth.
Right, Mayor, we don't have any ordinances this evening, so we'll roll into resolutions. Item 10A is a request from Brett Basquen on behalf of APT Investors ArchCo Auburn Owner LLC for conditional use approval of a previously approved conditional use for a performance residential use, multiple unit development located at 1397 North Dean Road in the Comprehensive Development District with a planned development district overlay. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval at its March 17, 2022 meeting. A public hearing is required.
Move to approve. Second.
All right, have a motion and a second. This time, I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions in the council? Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This has been delayed once before. This is the second request for extension. The, the rationale provided is that they can't get building permits within enough time to finish. What, what's going on there? Why, why are we delayed after two extensions on getting them building permits?
I'll have Mr. Foote, our planning director, explain what he knows, and if we have further questions, we can ask the applicant.
As I understand it, this project was approved in 2020. Conditional use is good for 18 months. They also got a one-time six-month extension, which is the only number of extensions you can get. So the project will expire at the link I said in June of 2022, and so they're buttoned up against that deadline that's approaching. They're not sure they're going to be able to get their building permits pulled by that time period, which would mean the conditional use expires. So they're asking for a brand-new, it's not an extension, it's a brand-new conditional use. It has the same number of units, everything is practically the same. Actually, the design's a little bit different, a little bit better, and so the Planning Commission did take a look at it, and they recommend approval.
So why can't they get the permits pulled?
You know, I don't know the, the issues that they're having with timing as far as that's concerned. I just know that they submitted a brand-new application asking to go ahead and re, not renew it, but to get a new one.
It's not a city issue that's delaying?
Not that I'm aware of. I think they're just, on their end, they're having an issue with getting everything lined up.
No, I mean, and that's the thing, to be vested, and we talked much about that in many other circumstances. Usually I have zoning certificates and building permits, and to get all the way through, they've not signaled to this stage. They absolutely can't do it, they're not positive that they can, and so we have a lot of development groups and engineers that are in the practice of asking well before they bump up against the deadline, just in case, instead of coming to you in June. And that, that's pretty commonplace lately. And I would say across the board, we've seen a lot of people with challenges, as usual, in COVID, getting some stuff done as we're coming out of it.
I had one additional question. This, you know, this planning and staff normally is, is really emphasizing connectivity, and this is basically a, a dead-end road here with 250 units being built on top of it. Is there any, are there any plans for Dean to continue elsewhere or connectivity over to Shelton Mill?
For North Dean Road, absolutely, it's on the city's major street plan to connect it all the way through. There is nothing, the developer does not control property where we can do that, and then just above this area also was shown an east-west connection that kind of comes from behind Lee Scott Academy, is that correct, City Engineer Frager, up, up off of North Dean Road? So we do have, the city has plans for it, but it, it wouldn't be within this development's per.
Understand that, yeah, understand that. Guys, didn't want to repeat of what we've done on Richardson Road over the years with a big, one-way-in, one-way-out development.
Yeah, there is one, you'll see to the right of North Dean Road, says outside the city limits. That's a small piece, and the rest of it going north was, and recently it may have changed, but under major single ownership, so there is, there is hope for this.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 10B1 is a request from Donald Durden to vacate a needed right-of-way for property located at 2400 Rutland Road. A public hearing is required.
Move to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second. This time, we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10B2 is a request from Stephen and Cecilia Lyle to vacate an unneeded drainage and utility easement located at 8992 and 8994 Hillendale Drive. A public hearing is required.
Move to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second. This time, we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, those are all the items of business we have for you this evening.
Okay. This time is your opportunity for citizens, open forum, to speak to the council about anything on your mind. We'd ask that you please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. Remember that you have three minutes. Remember, your comments should be directed towards the council. Yes, sir.
Hey, Mayor and Council. My name is Robert Wilkins, 261 Denson Drive, Auburn, Alabama. I wanted to talk about the, the city lack of fiscal responsibility, talk about ordinance 3288, short-term rental. First, over $100,000 is spent for truck and expense, city employees and benefits and software for monitoring 151 families and implementing short-term rentals, ordinance 3288. I feel like a criminal because I have, y'all spent this much money to make sure that we abide by the rules that have been set that we feel is not correct. I attended a state court hearing on March 17th. I noticed we spent probably $100,000, the city has, on legal expenses from a law firm in Birmingham. There are plenty of law firms here, of course, in the Auburn area, and it was the, the case Sid, Stephen Dixon versus the City of Auburn. It was kind of a, a total embarrassment because the, the law firm, all they talked about were cases. There were four cases in Alabama, one was Budget Inn versus the City of Daphne, there was one, a case in Boaz, Birmingham, and Gurley, and all of them were based on commercial things. There were not anything residential at all. And they also talked about a Houston, Houston case in Texas. Third, the City of Auburn has made agreement, made an agreement with Airbnb in 2017, over 165,000 in revenue was collected. If you convert that to 10 years, that's at least 100, 1.6 million, maybe 2 million or more, that the city would have, would get, but you've thrown that out. Also, the city accepted lodging tax from us, they, even the mayor took, our councilman, Dixon, went to his house and looked at the Airbnb to see that it was just a regular home, and something, also, the mayor and council allowed us to operate with their approval, but then they tore away our livelihood with no correspondence. This mayor and council had a responsibility to keep us informed before the cease and desist order. That is the only thing I ever got from the council, and I'm afraid next correspondence will be, cease, maybe taking my home. I don't know. I don't know what you're going to do next. There's a hotel going up, and you're very familiar on your stomping ground, Mayor, where the Anderson Bookstore is. I wish at the grand opening that y'all would have a tour also the Airbnb, so you could tell the difference between a real hotel and our homes, because I have a four-bedroom home, Mr. Dixon has a one-bedroom suite under his house. Auburn's growth is 4.2% since the last census. It is, it is too simple, too much simpler to manage a growing city. It's easier. I guess that's why it's easier to waste city funds.
Who will be next? Anyone? Okay, so move to adjourn?
So moved.
Where adjourn?